Good evening, and welcome to the, what is it, December 4th City Council Meeting. I call the meeting order, and we don't have a pledge leader or our entertainment here tonight, so would everybody please stand up and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to our consent docket counselors. Does anyone wish to remove or clarify an item, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That brings us to public comment on agenda not, items not scheduled for public hearings. I'd like to remind the audience of the rules. Speakers are limited to a specific item on the agenda, on the agenda, and each speaker has three minutes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name. With that said, I would like to ask Ms. Shirley Weeks to come forward.
My name is Shirley Weeks. I live at 71 University Circle. I know you all will not find this surprising, but I come in a state of confusion about the form-based code. I think the citizens in Stillwater, including myself, count on you to help us know the total facts about codes, ordinances, laws, and so forth. I think there seems to be even confusion about what is happening and how things do happen. I have no idea of even how many code-based, form code-based that we even have in Stillwater. One of my concerns about this current one is the large development on Fourth and Hester Street. For a very long time, that street has been so terrible that citizens can't drive on it, and I feel like that it's not the citizens' responsibility to provide space for equipment, that sort of thing. When they were building the one on Hester Street, there was a period of time, a block of that street was closed because they didn't have enough room on the property to store equipment. So I guess I'd just like to know, if somebody is in charge of this type of code, is it monitored? Does somebody have a job to monitor it? I know we're all interested in sales tax. I think if we closed down the street where Eskimo Joe's is, that we might lose quite a little bit of sales tax, and I think the other street is not a really good street for traffic either. So I just would like for you all to be my representative, check this all out, and make sure that this development is the right thing for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shirley. And with that, we move to general orders. Mr. McNichol.
We have a report on the form-based code by Ms. Dennison of our Development Services Director.
Thank you. Good evening. Paula Dennison with Development Services. We were asked to bring before the council some alternatives for the form-based code for consideration and to seek your direction and your guidance, if there's any of this that y'all would like for us to proceed with. Very quickly, you have a report and an attachment in your packets. Form-based codes were adopted for a specific area of town, and I do have a small PowerPoint that can show that area. Form-based codes were adopted in this area of town. They became effective July 1 of 2015 as a regulation scheme not like the typical traditional Euclidean zoning. The area is generally encompassed by Hall of Fame to the north, just west of Main Street on the east side of the map. Sixth Avenue is on the south side, and it goes a little past Washington on the west side of the map. So that is the area that is encompassing. It does immediately abut Oklahoma State University, and this area, the very southeast area of this code, was drawn to abut the then-in-place Business Improvement District, which has since expired. The adoption of the form-based codes, when it came through and was adopted, it did provide elevated expectations for redevelopment and revitalization within this specific area, and unlike our traditional residential zoning, commercial zoning, industrial zoning, agriculture, public, whatever the case may be, you can see there are two colors on this map, the T5 and the T6. They have a mixture of uses that are allowed in each one of those categories. They also have other design component expectations that anything that comes through seeking approval within this area to be constructed will have to meet. However, there is another component to this. It doesn't just consider the private property, it also considers the relationship of the private property to the public property or the public realm, most specifically the rights-of-way that these private properties are adjacent to and take access to and from. Therefore, that's what's driving our item this evening before you. About two and a half years ago, the city reconstructed Maple Avenue. There is a piece of property under consideration. It is within the form-based code area for redevelopment and reinvestment on Maple Avenue. What the form-based code in its current application and law will require is another reconstruction of half-street of Maple Avenue to the form-based code standard for the entire frontage along this one individual piece of property. That's the dilemma, because we have practically a brand-new street. There is no allowance in the form-based code for staff, including the city manager's office or the city attorney's office, nor the city council or planning commission to come in and say it meets certain criteria, or there's an allowance for an exception or anything. None of that is written into the form-based code. Therefore, we're here before you tonight to seek guidance for situations such as this that may come up, have come up, and may continue to come up. You will see in your report that there are four alternatives, and I'd like to go through these right quickly. If nobody has any questions of the situation, what's gotten us here? I see a question.
Can you somewhat briefly just describe the additional public realm improvements that are required by a developer to make if they're redeveloping property in the form-based code area?
Certainly. There are a number of different scenarios, but those are based on the existing rights-of-way of the streets. So not every street is going to be able to accommodate everything that may be required. So, greatest extent possible, the requirements are wider sidewalks on both sides of the street, bicycle tracks or lanes, tracks are somewhat elevated, separated, differentiated from just a marked bicycle lane, curb and gutter, streetscaping, which will include tree wells or some other form of green or landscaping between typically the sidewalk and the bike track or the bike lane. Lighting is a requirement, pedestrian-scale lighting to where not everything is, just has this magical glow from higher up. Of course, the travel lanes, and parking in a variety of means, parallel, angled, or center of the street. So there's a lot of things happening within the existing rights-of-way of whatever street designation that there is.
And so if a property owner wants to redevelop their property, they're responsible to pay for all of that stuff to happen in the right-of-way that's adjacent to their property?
For half-wit of that full right-of-way, yes, along the full extent of their frontage.
And is there a limit? Like what is, if I just wanted to go in and put a new roof on my house in the form-based code area, would that trigger my responsibility to do this? How much has to be done to trigger the responsibility?
Sure. Typical upkeep and maintenance does not trigger the compliance requirement to the form-based codes, but a change of use would, redevelopment, any major reinvestment in the property. This example, that, not going to name the address or any of the potentials, because I don't want to risk the opportunities that are out there, but a house to a duplex. That is a major change that can be occurring on the property. Footprint is going to be greatly expanded of the existing structure. That is a major change to the property, no matter if the use was not even changing, that expansion of that footprint. And there is nothing, those criteria are not set in the code. Those are, you know, what does your staff believe is a realistic trigger for the application of this public realm? Now, a total, complete demo and start from scratch? Yes, absolutely. That's the easy.
And within the code, there's no, what you're saying is that there's just, if they're going to do this on that property, there is no allowance or mechanism or appeal or anything to say you have now 20 feet of frontage that you have to do half the street and reconstruct everything?
That is correct.
And in this particular case, it's a street that's just recently been done, and so it's not practical to think that potential developer or purchaser would be responsible for paying that upfront cost it would cost to...
True, and there's also, I'm going to back up a little bit, and I'll probably step on Monty's toes here a little, but that street already has a life value of 30, 40, 50 years. Look at the investment that the public has already made into this street, and now we're going to require somebody to come in and damage that investment, granted in the hope that it will become better, but why even go through the process of damaging that investment right now for this reason?
Yeah. I mean, and I'm worried about even streets that haven't been redone, right? If you've got a single block or a single lot on a different street that maybe does need work on it, but we're still requiring someone who's taking a single lot with, I mean, how much frontage is a single lot? I said 20 feet, but that's not right?
Fifty typically.
Fifty feet? How much do you think, is there a general estimate of how much it costs if I was just going to do a single lot to take that 50 feet of frontage, half the street, and get it to the full form-based code standards? I mean, it seems like probably a pretty big expense.
It's substantial, yes, especially individual lots. Now, granted, take some of the large developments where they have accumulated a number of lots, it's still substantial investment that they have, but on an individual lot. We have not done the calculations to see, but I can say it is substantial. It would be substantial.
So the way that the form-based code is written now, for the fact that we want to have that mixed use, we are limiting ourselves with the potential for mixed use by having it the way it's written now, and so we need to look at some different ways to...
That is why staff has evaluated these specific alternatives that we can go through, if you'd like to have a discussion on them, because we do believe that these are the alternatives that are most viable, and please keep in mind as we go through, these are very general. We have not developed specifics on what these, each of these alternatives might entail. We're just seeking your direction on which one would y'all want us to go develop and bring back to you at some future date.
Mayor, if I may, I went to this location with the developer, and this house desperately needs to be done, and the unfortunate thing is, and we estimated the cost in that case to be somewhere near worth of $25,000, and that makes it, makes the development economically unfeasible for the developer, and this is exactly the kind of structure that we want to encourage we redevelop.
In the form-based code?
In the form-based code area, exactly.
What happens if it's not a development that you really want?
What happens if what?
I mean, you know, it's easy to say, oh yeah, we'd like to encourage this type of development, but what if it's not a development that we would like, if we have...
It depends on the kind of development and where and in which transect and whether or not they meet all the codes. If you're talking about multi-story buildings...
If we have, if we change the expectation, it's changed for everything.
It is, absolutely. And in the case of Hester Street, it's going to be redone halfway, as is Fourth Street and all of Ramsey, between Fourth and Sixth. So those are already in progress, substantially larger developments.
Other questions?
Walk through the alternatives. Are we ready? Okay. All right. Alternative one is to take no action. There is currently a review committee meeting to formulate recommendations that may include a plan to finance the required public realm improvements in the form-based code area. So taking no actions would, no action right now, would allow them time to develop their plan and make whatever recommendation back to the city council. That does not alleviate the current requirement that the developer is responsible to meet the public realm improvements for any development, nor does it address the current development that has driven this. So that's alternative one. And these are not in any type of order at all. Next alternative, direct us to look at repealing or amending the form-based code public realm requirements. This would be any of those requirements and included in your packet, and I'm just going to hold it up here, the street in question. These are the public realm requirements on that street, just what I had explained in response to Counselor Joyce's question. So what that does is it could waive the infrastructure improvement requirements, and this is one of the things that staff considered, when that public infrastructure has been reconstructed within the last X number of years, 10 included in this, or specifically waive the street requirements for the portion of Maple addressing this specific request that was recently reconstructed by the city. So what that would do is generally give us guidance to return to you with a recommendation of amending, either repealing or amending, the public realm-only requirements of the form-based code. That would leave all the obligation to the private property in place, which is more the design components and aesthetics look. Third option, you can have us begin the process to fully repeal the form-based code in its entirety and apply traditional zoning to the private property, which would go back to residential, commercial, industrial, that type of zoning. And finally, have us begin the process to amend the boundaries of the area that's covered by the form-based code. One of the things that staff did look at, and I'll bring up this map. This is a map indicating the underlying land use, so you can ignore the colors. What's most important on this map is the dark-hatched area that you can see connecting into downtown. These are the designated pedestrian corridors linking downtown through the form-based code area and up to Oklahoma State University. So we would be considering, whatever direction that y'all give us, we would be considering the impact to these pedestrian corridors, because we firmly believe that those are good, solid duum links along those designated streets that we have. And these streets are husband, Fourth, this is Noblock and Washington, so up a little bit, Duck and Over. Questions for me?
How many, and you may not be able to answer this, but how many other properties are similar to this where we could hear this again?
I would suspect that any of the redevelopment and reinvestment that is not on a major grand scale, like we've been seeing with the student housing, could have the potential to see situations not exactly the same, because not every street in this area has been recently reconstructed or had a lot of improvements done to it. But there, yes, I could anticipate that there would be opportunities to come back before the council. Primarily, and I'll say what Mr. McNichol did earlier, primarily because of the value, the cost of this public realm requirement to that individual specific property.
Another question. If we did no action, because you have a committee meeting, right?
Yes, ma'am.
On this, not just a committee meeting, but their meeting several times, I assume, when will they have recommendations or ballpark?
I may defer to the chair of the committee, Counselor Joyce, if he would like to address, or Mr. Dorman. I'm not taking that one.
All right. Counselor Joyce?
I can't, I don't know that I can give you a solid date for when we might have a recommendation. It won't be until after the first of the year. And, you know, I'm not sure that it will directly address this problem in its entirety anyway, even if we were, whatever the TIF committee comes up with, whether this issue will be fully resolved by that. So it, I don't know that waiting for that is going to solve this problem.
Okay.
I really like the philosophy of the form-based code, and I think it has great benefits for this whole part of Stillwater. Gives us much more latitude and much more contemporary approach to planning and developing. It has been a problem, though, and I think there are people who want smaller persons who want to develop in that area, which is exactly what we want, that are not on a street that has been redone in 10 years. So I feel like if we are going to make an amendment to the public realm requirements, it needs to be just all across the board, not because a street is new or not, because, you know, everybody will want to build on Maple, and then it'll be done. And I don't think that that is really fair to limit it to that. I do think we have to make some amendment, because we're losing opportunities, and time is money. You know, people can't buy property and hang on until we finally decide what we're going to do three years from now. So every day that we delay them is, diminishes our return in the form-based code area. So I'm for an amendment of the public realm requirements, but I would not want it hinged to the age of the street. And I don't know how you do that, but...
That was going to be my question back.
Oh, well.
We will take suggestions, and we will massage them and be able to bring back something to the city council. So any suggestions you have, we'll be happy to take. This was just a, such as if the street had been reconstructed, that could be one of the items within the amendment. There can be others. It can be no, if you choose, no changes to those designated as pedestrian corridor, because if that is an important, if the council believes that is an important piece to keep in here, then that would remove those streets from lessening or amending or doing away with those public realm requirements. But it's those type things that would help give us guidance to bring something solid back to you.
Just by way of, I guess, maybe an additional suggestion in there, I mean, I completely agree that it needs to apply code-based area-wide, because even if the street hasn't been recently reconstructed, if it's the only development happening on an older street, you're going to get, again, a 50-foot-wide half a street of really nice sidewalks and one street light, and the rest of the street's still going to look the same. So something in that amendment that addresses that question of, you know, building some sort of critical mass on a block before we start making those, I don't want to make a developer do that work and then have the guy across the street and down four houses have to do it then too, and then, you know, it just, that patchwork approach seems inefficient. And so if we can come up with an option that says, you know, it makes sense to me that developers in this area want to see these public realm improvements made, right? That's part of the value of redeveloping here. It's definitely more expensive to do, but to some extent, it has value to the developer as well. So figuring out some kind of reasonable additional cost that is, should be borne by a developer in this area makes sense, but it also makes sense to not say it has to be done at the same time you redo the house, because, again, the rest of the street may need to be redone. So if it's depositing that money, or if it's, you know, doing something where there's a recognition that it may not be five years before that whole street gets redone. So I would like to see something like that in the recommendation, that takes into account that the developer is getting value out of having nice public realm improvements, and that we are, as a community, getting value out of having a cohesive, comprehensive redevelopment of this area that matches, that looks nice, that is, you know, the same from when you enter at Sixth and Main until you get up to campus, it feels like one neighborhood. That's what we're trying to go for here, and we want that to happen. So something that ensures that, but also recognize the fact that piecemeal development happens, and it's expensive to do all this at once, so.
Paula, would I say on the size of development? I mean, as far as how payments would be done, or what, we're talking about cost, does that a consideration as far as what we need to look at as far as amending any of this?
We can, if you'd like for us to take a look at that, almost tiered. If you're small, single lot, and you're just wanting to do just a simple something that could trigger it, and what's the value of that, and then just work our way up to the major conglomeration of properties with the multi-multi-multi-million-dollar projects. Yes, we can try to come up with something and bring it back to you. That, I don't suspect that'll be an easy task, because it can vary.
Seems like it would be hard to do it by cost, but it would, if you were doing an entire street length, or three-fourths of, seven-eighths of a street or some...
Prorate it based on street frontage or something.
Well, I will just say, I agree with what you said, I agree with everybody, actually, about, I like this latitude, and I like the form-based code, because it gave us latitude and it gave us some options we didn't have before, that make it a neighborhood and make it try to connect to downtown. It's all good, but it's growing pains right now, and I think that's what we're going to. So I really appreciate, is it the Land Development Committee?
Committee, yes.
Okay, so I really appreciate their work. I know it's a hard job, and I think we can work through this and find answers. There's never going to be, well, there probably are two problems that are alike, but we're going to see a lot of things that we'll just have to work through. But I agree, we, I think we can do some things to encourage what we need to and keep it for the things that we really like. So you need a suggestion, don't you?
Any other ideas? I'm writing down as quickly as y'all can.
We need to make a motion?
I don't know if you necessarily need a motion, since you're not really taking any action on this tonight, but simply directing... and simply directing staff in the direction you want them to go. And I think that's, from your comments, that's really apparent.
So amendment of public realm requirements? Is that what everybody's saying? Okay.
And if we can press the probably overworked LDC, Land Development Committee, also into the task, once we come up with some ideas, that probably would be helpful.
You would like to work over Christmas, right? Because there are people just waiting at the door.
Yeah, I mean, jokes aside, yes, this needs to be resolved as quickly as we can because there are projects that need to happen, so.
Projects we are glad that are going to happen, so.
Okay, well, we will come back after we have developed and then run it through the Land Development Ad hoc Committee. We'll be back to you.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks for your suggestions and your time.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. That takes us to ordinances on first reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordinance number 3390. An ordinance closing a utility easement on property addressed as 1710 East Sixth Avenue.
Counselors? Questions, motion?
Motion to move to second reading?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance to a second reading on ordinance number 3390, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance number 3390 is advanced to second reading. Item B, ordinance number 3391, Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance closing a portion of a utility easement on property addressed as 1824 West University Avenue.
Counselors, questions or motion?
Motion to advance to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance number 3391 to second reading, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, ordinance number 3391 is advanced to second reading. And that brings us to ordinance number 3392, Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance rezoning tracks of land addressed as 602 Southwest Street from CG PUD, Commercial General District Planned Unit Development to CG Commercial General District.
Counselors?
Motion to advance to second reading.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance number 3392 to second reading, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, ordinance number 3392 is advanced to second reading. That brings us to reports from officers and boards, and we will start with City Attorney.
One item tonight, ma'am. Request an executive session pursuant to 25 OS Subsection 307(c)(10) for the purpose of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the city of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. When you start a business, it's an exciting venture. And we've learned lately that there are a lot of things that people think that the city either does or does not do that might not be quite accurate. So it requires a lot of planning to start a new business, which is why City Staff prepared a list to frequently ask questions about opening a business in Stillwater. The information is valuable not only to new business owner, but also residents interested in the process. So you can find the frequently asked questions and more at stillwater.org/business.
Thank you, sir. City Counselors, do you have any news?
I do. The Public Library always has a very popular summer reading program, but they especially have also a winter reading program for children, teens, and adults. Everyone is encouraged to participate. All programs include age-appropriate activities, reading suggestions, and prizes. For more information, go to library.stillwater.org.
And I know it was summer today, but it's going to be winter later tonight, so it's a good winter reading program.
Yep, you'll want to stay inside and read.
Counselors in nodding?
Yes, I would have felt silly, once again, reading this this morning when there was a heat wave, but it's getting cooler out. So remember to head downtown, downtown Stillwater this Thursday, December 7th, for the Stillwater Christmas Parade of Lights. It begins at 7:00. If you want to stay warm but still enjoy a night out, come to the Community Center for a show this month. The Stillwater Community Singers Holiday Concert is Thursday, December 14th, so next week, at 7:30 p.m. And the Stillwater Community Band and Stillwater Jazz Holiday Concert is Friday, December 14th, at 7:00 p.m. So this Thursday, Christmas Parade at 7:00 p.m., downtown Stillwater. And next Thursday, the 14th, at 7:30, the Stillwater Community Singers Holiday Concert and the Community Band and Jazz Holiday Concert, so please enjoy.
Sounds good. Counselor Joyce?
Yes, the envoy team that supports the American Airlines operation at Stillwater Regional Airport will conduct a food drive through December 20th. All food will be donated to our Daily Bread Food Bank. A container is set up to receive canned goods and other non-perishables in the main lobby. I assume that's the main lobby of the airport? The main lobby of the airport, and those who donate will receive a thank you gift. We appreciate Envoy and American Airlines being part of our community and having a food drive. That's great.
Flystore. Counselor Wedlock?
So if you live or own property outside of city limits, consider applying for the 2018 Rural Fire Service Contract with the Stillwater Fire Department. The contract fee is $100 per year, and that ensures that the response fee for any potential fire on the contracted property does not exceed $2,000. So if you'd like more information on this, you can find that information by contacting the Stillwater Fire Administration.
Thank you. Anything else?
I want to do a shout-out. That Winter Wonderland on Block 34 opened up on Friday. And bless their hearts, I think the weather today messed them up a little bit, but I think by tomorrow they'll be ready to go. But if you, I mean, it was great. It was packed all weekend. You've got ice skating, you can visit the reindeer, Santa's there. Hertie's has their barbecue, they have their dessert. I mean, there just is, there's bleachers you can sit and watch if you're like me and not going to even chance it on the ice because that would just be, but anyway.
And they're shopping really close, really close.
And there's a warm place, too, isn't there?
Yes.
There's a warm place to sit.
So shout-out to everyone that's involved with that and especially business at Stillwater who has done a great job promoting it. It's a great, great winter activity for families and everyone to come out and enjoy. So come downtown.
Okay, that brings us to appointments, and we have two different items there. The first one is the Sister Cities Council. And Judy Nelson, John Mills, and Cindy Petry, all of their terms expire and they all wish to be reappointed. So I make the nomination to reappoint all to the Sister Cities Council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Judy Nelson, John Mills, and Cindy Petry. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, all three are reappointed. We appreciate their service and thank them for their interest in Sister Cities. It's a great program. We also have the Audit Committee. And there were several, I think there were three, applications. And there's one opening. I'm going to nominate Susie Presley from Bank First.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to nominate Susie Presley to the Audit Committee, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, Susie Presley is now a member of the Audit Committee. Congratulations and thank you for your service. Okay, at this time, I am going to recess the Stillwater City Council meeting, and we're going to go to the Stillwater Utility Authorities Meeting. I call that meeting to order. And Consent Docket Trustees, is there a motion or does someone need something clarified?
Motion to accept consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. That brings us down to general orders. Mr. McNichol?
Our CFO for both the SUA and the City of Stillwater, Melissa Reams, will have a short report for us on possible loan to the airport.
Good evening, trustees. Melissa Reams, Chief Financial Officer. We are beginning a $4.9 million project out at the airport. It is a parallel taxiway along with some addition to the bypass taxiway. 90% of this project is funded with a grant through the Federal Aviation Administration. The other 5% is through local sponsorship, which is us, the city, the airport. And 5% is from the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission. That is all wonderful, good news, but how do we cash flow that project? That is why I'm here tonight to ask you to let the two entities, the Stillwater Utilities Authority and the City of Stillwater, enter into an interfund loan arrangement where we could borrow as needed from the SUA, pay the bills that need to be paid, and then, once we apply for our grant reimbursement, which is on a monthly basis, we pay that money back to the SUA. So it's kind of like a revolving charge account or credit account, if you will. We listed some additional options here. Because of the short-term nature, we were not going to attach an interest rate to these borrowings. You could do that, you could recommend that we do that. Or you could recommend that we look outside of our own organization for that type of borrowing. So that is my short little report for this evening. Our recommendation is that we use the funds within our organization at no interest.
Trustees, discussion, questions, or motion?
Out of curiosity, you don't have any third parties that would give you an interest-free loan, do you?
I don't know that, I haven't asked. The good news with this one is you have a revenue stream, so that does make it a little easier when you go with your hand out asking.
Just to clarify, the actual 5% of the project fund that comes from the city is not being paid out of this SUA?
That is correct. It has already been budgeted. In fact, it was budgeted over two fiscal periods in fiscal '17 and '18. It is actual cash sitting in a designated fund for this project. So our 5% is already set aside. And as we make those grant requests, that little bit gets eaten up each month.
So, okay, so the SUA money is really just a float?
It is, it's like a bridge loan to get us over the hump, and then we pay it back as we get our grants, grant drawdowns.
Is there any potential that we don't get our grant drawdowns?
Not to my knowledge at this point because we have signed grant documents with these agencies. It would be, I think, catastrophic at this point.
Well, it is the state of Oklahoma. Part of it is, I guess.
Yes, a little part, 5%.
That's fine, thank you.
Trustees, is there a motion?
To approve the short-term, non-interest-bearing interfund loan between the Stillwater Regional Airport and the Stillwater Utilities Authority in support of the parallel bypassing taxiway.
I will second that motion.
Yeah. That's good.
I read it right off the...
Please vote, there's a motion and a second to approve, please vote. And with a vote of five to zero, your request has been approved.
Thank you, trustees.
That brings us to, well, Mr. McNichol, Water Resources.
We have a report from Bill Willis. Bill Millis, I really do know, our Water Resources Manager. And there's been interest in the council in the past about asset management, and I think that what you're going to hear from Bill will catch your attention.
Good evening. As Mr. McNichol said, I'd like to talk to you tonight about asset management from a water resources or perspective, or perspective of managing water utilities and how we apply those principles. What I want to do is describe generally our assets, describe the team that manages them, describe how we utilize asset management, and then describe some of the work we have accomplished. So feel free at any time, go ahead and ask questions. Just let me know at any time. So starting off with about our assets, as you know, we are raw water sources Call Lake, and we own a pump station at the lake and a 36-mile, 36-inch pipeline to our water treatment plant. This is a map just showing the numerous facilities that we have distributed across our water systems. You know, we have a municipal water system, two rural water systems consisting of 13 water storage tanks and 14 pump stations. On, we'll have, through the presentation, a few more maps like this, and I really just intend them to give you an overview and not, I kind of want to respect your time and not dive into a lot of detail about every one. But at any time, if you want more detail or just want to, you know, look at a map and absorb it for a minute, just let me know, and I'll slow down. This is, this map shows our numerous different pressure zones. Each one is, in a sense, like its own small system with pump stations and typically storage in the zones. The reason, it looks pretty complex, but the reason for that is to provide adequate pressure and yet not too much pressure for all our customers. Our elevation range, well, in this exhibit is, shows what a different pressure zone will do. So the one on the left would be, for example, the central zone, and then we have a pump station pumping it up to a higher pressure level to serve higher ground, for instance, the southwest zone. The, our range of elevations in Stillwater is, it's about 850 feet above sea level down near the wastewater plant, up to over 1,100 in the northwest part of our rural system. So that's a pretty good range. So Oklahoma's not completely flat. This is similar to the map we looked at just a minute ago. This is the extent of the wastewater utility. We've got 16 lift stations distributed around town and over 230 miles of sewer pipe all flowing down to the wastewater plant. So to sum it up, all this infrastructure represents an enormous investment, and it's our responsibility to take good care of it. So this means consistent preventive maintenance, spending the resources most wisely and anticipating most of the major needs and expenditures. So any questions here before moving on?
Just out of curiosity, OSU is on those maps. Are they included in the systems for either water or wastewater?
No, sir, that's for reference on the maps. We do have, since you brought it up, you know, we used to have a combined system and starting, I don't know, five to seven years ago, they began treating their own water again. So they're a separate system, but we have a mutual agreement to serve each other in times of need. And we've exercised that from time to time. But theirs is an independent system, and we essentially surround it.
So, but we have infrastructure that runs across OSU campus still? I mean, it looks like there's still stuff on there.
Yeah, there's one, some of that, yes. There's a major water line that runs north-south along Monroe. And some of what you can see up there on the north end of campus is areas that were not in campus, you know, until recent years. So that's why some of that looks like we serve the campus.
Yeah, okay.
And there still is, for instance, near Athletic Village, some sewer lines that run through that area that are city sewer lines serving our customers on the upstream side of OSU. So our most important asset is our people, the water team. And without their dedication, you know, we don't have a hope of maintaining all the physical assets we've been talking about. So here I just wanted to show you the divisions. The top two and the bottom two are divisions within Water Resources. And you can see, I won't read it to you there, but you can see the staffing levels. And in the middle two divisions are part of the Operations Department. And we work real closely with them, you know, on a daily basis. And just wanted to give you a view of who the people are that are maintaining our infrastructure. No questions here, all. Keep moving on to how we do it. And this, you know, with the annual budget request, you see from Water Utilities, Water Resources, you see a spending plan. So what I wanted to talk about now is how we develop that spending plan and each year tell you, here's the projects that we're going to initiate or continue during this fiscal year. And so, starting on the top, with GIS, you can see here, these, I guess they look like blood droplets in red, but they're... they look like blood droplets in red, but they're, they symbolize water leaks. So we use the GIS to keep a record of water leaks, and we can also map defects, pipe age, pipe material, input from other O&M activities on the sewer side, sewer backups and things like that. And all that goes to inform or identify areas with problems. You know, the more, if you turned on all those layers, you'd see what the impact or the extent of the problems are in certain areas. Another big source of input is our field staff. They provide inspections of the infrastructure, provide video of underground sewer lines so we can assess the condition. From the plant staff and operations staff, they can confirm or let us know of issues with particular equipment, particular infrastructure, which ones are requiring the most of their resources to keep them in service. And we do, we rely heavily on the Operations Department for, both for data and for field knowledge, helping design capital projects and facilitating and coordinating construction. So it's a real, a real strong partnership between the two departments. Third aspect is urgency. Often, you know, this photo is from the 2015, we had a collapse of a major interceptor just south of the wastewater plant, and for those few weeks, it just, you know, turned our world upside down trying to address that, but sometimes that's what happens. Our priorities and all our effort into plans go out the window for a while, and we have a new number-one priority. The last piece here that I'm going to talk about is assistance from consultants, from the consultants that we hire. Could be developing master plans and identifying longer-term plans for a, for the water utility or the wastewater utility as a whole. It could be like this Water 2040 map suggests, looking at a particular area or a particular aspect of our assets, and what we'd have them do is assess and give recommendations on and prioritization of improvements. So this, we're not going to dive into any of the text or the numbers here, but I just wanted to show you an example on how we use this to develop our capital program for managing the assets. So this is for the water treatment plant, and we have one for each division, and you can see there, number one is for the Division. Two is the list of, you know, all the projects that we came up with off of the last slide. We list here, we prioritize based on timing. You know, we'd know that we'd need to, say, paint a water tower every so many years, so you'd put that on there. If you have projects that are all, in a sense, need to be done now, you prioritize them. We look at criticality and also risk-based. For instance, a water line serving the hospital would be a higher priority than probably a water line serving a small neighborhood. So the risks and the downside to having that infrastructure fail, all factors into this. We estimate each one of them, but these are real, very rough planning-level estimates, projected out for the year that we estimate that they'll happen. And then numbers four and five, we summarize the single-year and then the five-year increment cost summaries to look at the budget impact on a year-to-year basis, but also to look at larger increments. If there's an imbalance, we, you know, you want it all to be relatively balanced and steady cash flow, but that can't always happen, and if there's going to be a big chunk, that we need a plan for it, or if we can possibly spread it out over more years. So there, number six, you can't read it, but it says, it's a 25-year cost just for the water treatment plant. And so on this slide, what I've done is pulled together for all the divisions and for the five and the 10 and the 20-year, our total need in capital funds. And you can see on the right, that's, those numbers are just projections based, they're rough numbers based on about where we are now as far as revenues available for capital, and that doesn't include the revenues for O&M, but you can see there's a, quite a gap there. And that's, that's a nationwide phenomenon that it's not, it's common nationally, and the trend nationally is for water and wastewater rates to be on the increase. So we're not, we're not in an unusual position, and we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit more about that later. These are, there's a group, the American Society of Civil Engineers, that every three or four years, they score all the infrastructure nationally, and this is their, I think that may be the 2013 overall is a, score a D-plus, and what I've looked at here is the Oklahoma branch, you know, breaking down just for Oklahoma, and they break it down among different types of infrastructure. And you can see there, they've got statewide water and wastewater at a D-plus and projecting there the overall statewide needs. So you can see, like I said, we're not in this alone. Looking at, at the renewal of infrastructure, a very rough rule of thumb is a 50-year replacement or 50-year lifespan, and that kind of works for things like pipes. We have some, some pipes that are 100 years old, but that's not the norm. You can, you can plan on 50 years, maybe some concrete basins might last 50 years, but a lot of equipment might only last 10 years, 15, 20 years, depending on what it is and what kind of abuse it takes. And here's a photo of, this is sewer infrastructure, less than 15 years old, and you can tell that's failed. The pipe is deflected and deformed there on the right. On the left, a tap into the sewer, an improper tap into the sewer deformed and collapsed the top, and now it's blocking the entire sewer pipe. And so those were identified when that infrastructure was less than 15 years old. They were repaired under a project this summer. It was the, if you remember, is the, I think we just called it the Sewer Point Repairs. But the main takeaway here is if we're spending money on infrastructure that's, you know, 15 years old instead of 50 or more, that takes away from that huge gap that we need to be addressing. It also emphasizes that design and construction are critical for making sure the infrastructure can last and keeping our rates reasonable, as reasonable as we possibly can. So without good processes as far as designing and constructing and confirming that the construction is all in accordance with standards, this is, this is the alternative. So for the last few minutes, I've talked a lot about our infrastructure and our assets, and before moving on, I did want to just make the point that there's more than this to what we do. And in fact, above all, in the water arena, we're focused on public health, and that informs, you know, all the prioritization that we talked about earlier. Protecting the public health is always a consideration there, and anytime we're, you know, making a decision, weighing options, that's always the top priority. So unless there's any questions on this section, I'll move on to the next. I wanted to tell you some about our accomplishments. This is, again, the water system, and this map shows projects completed within the last five years, 16 of them, eight projects currently under construction, and 12 projects in design. The asset management, however, is more than just completing these projects. This map's a good time to talk about the Operations Department, because, you know, they spend their days out on, in the distribution system, maintaining and servicing assets like valves and hydrants, making sure they work properly, providing the periodic preventive maintenance that they need, regularly inspecting elements. There's, there may be a water line crossing a creek or otherwise exposed, so they inspect these elements and do, perform a portion of asset management every day in the, in the O&M arena. And another point about these projects that I'd like to make the public, all they see is the construction, when we have construction going on, but there's a lot of time and resources going in before we ever get to bidding and construction with project evaluation, survey, design, right-of-way acquisition, and also on the topic of our customers, which this is, I guess, a bit of a tangent, but it's, I wanted to, I think it's worth making the point that for us and our program to be successful, I think we need the trust and support of our 18,000-plus ratepayers. So this slide, I won't read those items, but that lists some of the efforts and tools that we've been using, some of them new, new tools developed in the last couple of years to minimize the impacts of our projects on our customers and on the traveling public, but keep them informed and also to let them know that we're available for concerns and issues and input. This here is the wastewater system. Likewise, in the past five years, we've completed 13 construction projects, six under construction now, and five projects in design. And just like with water ops here, they clean and run a TV camera through sewer lines as part of regular maintenance and regular assessment of our systems to identify problems before they become bigger problems. They also, they routinely treat for roots growing into the sewer lines and inspect These are, this is an aerial photo of the water plant, just give you a picture there, again, of projects completed in the last five years in design and under construction, and the same thing for the wastewater plant. So you can see that we have a lot, a lot going on and a lot still in the works. At, excuse me. At each of the plants, we have software and other systems that track and schedule preventive maintenance, another aspect of asset management, and a way to get the most out of the equipment. So they'll, we'll have printouts every week, and it'll tell you, you know, which, which equipment needs inspection or oil changed or whatever, things like that. This graph is, it's the historic expenditures roughly over the last decade. What it illustrates to me, if you look, you know, back at the early or the mid-2000s and even before, that Stillwater, like, like we talked about earlier, like most cities around the country, was in a reactive mode and honestly kind of a passive mode about taking care of the infrastructure. However, staff and trustees in Stillwater recognize that we needed to invest in our assets to restore them and establish a, reestablish a culture of management and maintenance of those assets. So in 2009, the SUA had the foresight to drop, to more assert, adopt, excuse me, a more assertive rate structure in 2009, and then again in 2015, that would renew and sustain our assets. So you can tell from the graph that in the follow-on to 2009 is when, you know, the activity and the expenditures really started ramping up, putting the increased rate revenue to good use and doing what it was intended to, to renew the infrastructure. So while it took decades to get where we were in 2009, it'll take time to establish a full and proper condition and proactive practices, but I feel like we're well on the way to doing that. Now I moved on without asking if you have any questions, but I wanted to talk about just a few examples, unless you have a question.
Oh, I can wait till you're done. I have two questions.
Okay. So as a couple of examples, this is the Call Pump Station before our project, and we've had, remember, we did a cost study, you may remember, in 2012, evaluating the pipeline and the pump station, and a list of recommended improvements came out of it significantly here at the pump station. And it may be hard to tell, but it's in some disrepair. You can tell the standing water is because of constant leaks that didn't drain away and couldn't be repaired because of where they were. So here, and again, it's kind of asset management, evaluating the situation and making the decision, do we rehab or do we replace? And in this case, a rehab project was the right thing to do, and we completed that in mostly, in still a couple of loose ends, but essentially completed that in the early 2017. But here is, here's the completed pump station, and that cost $6 million, which is significant. That's almost the full share, or almost, yeah, almost the full share of water portion available for capital expenses for a year. So that's on one, one facility. So it's a, it's a critical facility, but it's just, you know, just showing you how much resources it takes to take care of our infrastructure.
And there's no standing water?
Hey, there's no more standing water, right. Yeah, we have a subdrain, a sub, subsurface drain system as well, as well as insulating the pipes so they don't freeze in the winter, refurbishing, we replaced some of the pumps, refurbished some of them, and added variable frequency drives. So the, a lot of the benefit of what that pump station's doing is it's no longer damaging the Call Pipeline. For the first, until we did this, every time those big pumps kicked on, it was like hitting the Call Pipeline with a sledgehammer. So we're not doing that anymore. We've stopped that damage. This photo here is the West Highway, West 51 Booster Pump Station. It's a Water 2040 project, completed this fall, and in this case, the decision came out differently. The old pump station was at 6th and Country Club, and it was, it really was not a hard decision. It's too small, it was underground, unsafe, so we completely replaced it and demolished it, replaced it with this new pump station. This one is the Western Road Water Line. It goes from the 56th Tower at 56th and Western and ties into our system at 44th and Western, and it will connect to Water 2040 when, as those projects move along. But what I thought was interesting on this project, you can see that it's not just a matter of throwing pipe in the ground. It's an 18-inch line, but here where the black is, I don't know if you can see the mouse, that's, all our fittings are made of ductile iron, and we wrap all of them in plastic wrap to protect them from groundwater, to protect them from corrosion. You can see barely hereby on each side of the pipe, those are tie rods which protect the pipe from the forces when, when the pressure changes quickly, either higher or lower, it can pull pipe joints apart. And so these tie rods protect the pipe from those forces. And you probably cannot see it, but right there is a tracer wire. Every foot of pipe we put in, we run tracer wire along the top of it so that in the future we can locate it when we have to dig it up, or if another utility or somebody's got to dig their lines. That way we can put electronic equipment on it and trace where the line goes. So anyway, a lot of, a lot of complexity even to just to put in a simple water line or sewer line in the ground.
You guys don't use the dowel rods anymore?
I, I wouldn't say that. A former city surveyor used to do that. He would douse for, to find the water lines, and I couldn't tell you that our staff doesn't use them anymore. They might. A couple of current capital projects underway. We've talked about this one before, but two water towers under construction for Water 2040, and this is phase, the second phase of a two-phase improvement plan on the, at the wastewater treatment plant. This is the flow equalization basin where, when rain comes, our plant flow goes up a lot, and if it's more than the plant can handle, they pump the water up here, and it's, it's a holding basin until we can treat it. A couple of projects upcoming, this one, this is at the water treatment plant, and this is almost hot off the press. It's a report that Black and Beach is working on for us now, hasn't been finalized, but I wanted to show you this for a couple of reasons. They've done a... They've done a pretty broad assessment of the treatment plant, excuse me, in numerous processes, and identified a lot of needs, but they're in the middle column, asset score. So what they're evaluating is the condition and the criticality of all these different elements, and, and then we can prioritize them. You can see at the bottom, that's, that's 24 million worth of improvements identified. And if we have to, to pick and choose, that's part of asset management, spending your money most wisely. So if we have 24 million available at that time, you know, we're going to take the top priority items. So the other point of this is, is that in the not-too-distant future, I'll be back, before you're talking about the water treatment plant and the, our needs there. This is a water quality study, which is a, it's going to be a comprehensive look at water quality throughout the, the system, from the quality of our source water, the call lake, through the treatment plant, out through the distribution system and to the customer's tap. It'll evaluate how those, those, historically, a lot of, most systems actually think of treatment and distribution separately, and they're not, neither's informed as to what's going on in the other. But they really do impact each other. So we're going to look at it comprehensively, and this could lead to improvements in infrastructure, could lead to optimal changes at the treatment plant or how we change, excuse me, how we run some of those processes, things that we do in the distribution system might need changes in O and M. And, and this is, back at the wastewater plant now, this is a lid of a digester, and you can see at the bottom right, the, the gases formed in, when digestion of sludge are very caustic, and they just eat up that steel. That's probably quarter-inch steel, maybe three-eighths. But anyway, we've repaired it all we can, and so we have a project underway to refurbish, we have three digesters, and we'll be doing, making improvements on all of them. So to, to recap, this at the top there summarizes the, you know, overall projects completed in construction and in design. That second little table is our, now, these numbers, the 10 million each are current, but they're rough, so don't, they're not, they're not projectable. You know, it's not going to be that way, as steady. But about 10 million for O and M, that's salaries, services and materials, things like that, at the plants and at operations out in the distribution system. And, and then, and then roughly 10 million available for capital, 7 million on the water side, 3 million on the sewer side. We, those, the funds are separate, so those don't mix. And then the bottom is just the same table you saw earlier with the capital fund needs projections and capital funds projected to be available, in a very, in a rough sense. So in concluding, I think our resources and operations are accomplishing, accomplishing a lot of good things with the resources that you've entrusted to us. We're evolving from a reactive to a proactive approach to managing our water and wastewater infrastructure, taking responsible care of the assets and the investment. So I thank you for your trust and your support, and I'm ready for questions.
Trustees?
I just have two quick questions. It's clear that the water sewer rates don't cover the complete need capital-wise. Do water and sewer rates cover the O and M as a?
Yes, the, well, the rates cover O and M and capital, both.
But for short, on capital, over, projected?
Well, correct. But the, you know, those rates will go up over time because the costs to provide the service are going to go up over time. So it, it kind of, you could skew it either way. You could say, well, let's pay O and M first, and whatever's left over will go to capital, or you could do it vice versa. So it's, it's not a yes or no to both. It's, it's going to be a balance of, you know, looking at what the needs are of each utility and, and the, the cost of providing the service, and then establishing the rate structure to cover both O and M and, and capital needs. But yes, you could make the decision to, to prioritize one over the other.
Okay.
Anything there?
Just real quickly, Dan Blankenship, Deputy City Manager. I think to put it more simply, what Bill is telling you is that we're not done with the need to raise water and wastewater rates. The water and wastewater rates are meeting our needs at this time, but as they've projected out 25 years, we're going to have considerable more needs that are going to require in order to meet those revenue requirements to continue to increase those rates.
My other question is, when I hear about water and pipes, I think about stormwater. I know stormwater is in the transportation area.
Yes.
How come? It's water and pipes, right?
Stormwater has, has traditionally been handled differently because it's not a true utility. It wasn't established when the SUA was established. It was established with the more traditional utilities. In fact, a stormwater, the stormwater was addressed, gosh, I'd have, I can't recall exactly when, but there, we do have a, quote, "utility" that has a separate funding source, and it's specifically dedicated for that.
Within the last 10 years.
Yeah, it's been a little bit longer than that prior to my time that was here. And so as far as putting stormwater into utilities, the SUA, I suppose that, that could be possible, but it just, I, I don't know, it just traditionally has not been.
I think one reason it may have traditionally ended up with streets is because a lot of the, the storm drain inlets, you know, they're integral with the streets, and in a lot of communities, the streets are used for part of the conveyance for stormwater. So that, that may be part of the historical reason.
Any other questions, trustees?
I just would like to, well, I have a couple of questions, but first, a statement of appreciation for the presentation, because that was great. It really is helpful to see that whole thing at one time and sort of see what the assets you're dealing with and how you do it. And I, this with lots of departments in the city and kind of get a sense of, instead of just seeing numbers or just seeing one project or just seeing, like, seeing how it all ties together is great. So thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Couple other points, just that the move from being reactive to proactive is just essential. I mean, that, that graph of a million dollars or so on stuff, or, I mean, it's just, we can't do that. I mean, you just end up, I mean, it's the same situation we're in with streets, right? Is that we, we went for so many years going, well, we don't have any money to fix them, so we're not going to mess with it. And all we do is push it out, and so then 10 years later, everything has to be fixed. And we, we have to continue that, and I appreciate what you said about, you know, those costs continue to increase, we're going to have to, to pay for them somehow. And then my last comment is just how kind of shocking it is sometimes to think about the fact that there are 70 people in the city who make my water come on and make sure, you know, my shower drains and the toilet flushes, and, I mean, you could put them all in this room. And, you know, sometimes it's to think about, you know, well, where's our water come from? Well, the city does it, or the government does it, or, you know, but it's 70 people. I mean, that's, that's kind of crazy to think about the fact that, you know, our neighbors and the people that, that we live with in the city, there's just 70 of them that make sure that that incredibly essential function happens in my house.
Yeah.
230 of pipes is, I think.
Sewer line, 30, yeah. Water line over 500.
So, thanks to all 70 of you.
And I could tell you that those 70 are dedicated, because when, when that water line by your house breaks in January at 10 o'clock at night, they're going to be out there and they're going to stay there until they get it fixed. They're not going to say, well, we'll, we'll look at it in the morning.
Yeah. Let's put all 70 of them in here and thank them, but we probably couldn't, because there's probably, there's, somebody's got to be running this plant, somebody's got to be fixing something, and so.
You can thank them for us.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, thank you.
If I may, just real quickly, I just wanted, I wanted to thank Bill and also let you know that he has a number of his staff here who are here, and if you folks want a moment so that the trustees can recognize, these are folks who, who are part of our Water Resources Department. And this is a big reason why that your water utility is more professionally managed than ever in history before. They are very, very dedicated, very competent people, and so I just wanted to give it to y'all to, to recognize them. And I certainly appreciate what Bill and his staff is doing. When Bill sat down and went through this presentation with me, I, I was practically in awe at what, what kind of things that they're, they're doing and accomplishing for this, this community. One of the things that Bill did show you, showed you a picture of a sewer line that 15 years. Water Utilities gets, I don't know, beat up a lot by the land development community. That's a land development project that prematurely failed probably 35 years in advance of what it should. He made the point that it's really important for us to have standards and ensure that those standards, because if they're not, and projects like that, then it's the ratepayers who pay for that. And we really feel that, you know, we should be looking out for the ratepayers' best interest in those scenarios and making sure that the, that the water improvements that are either being built, designed and built by our staff, or designed and built by land developers are of the same. So that's, that's really what we're striving for. And so, once again, I very much appreciate all your support for everything that, that you've done to help these folks deliver what is probably the most essential service to this community, and that's water. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Takes us to reports from our General Counsel.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
General Manager.
No items, ma'am.
Trustees.
Nothing to report.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, we are adjourned, and I will now reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. Do we have a motion and a second to move into the executive session?
Motion to move to executive session.
We have a motion and a second to move to executive session. Please vote. With the vote of five to zero, we are now moving to executive session. Thank you to everybody.